Okay, we'll call this meeting in order to Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors April the 30th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Layland.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Chalka.
Here.
White.
Here.
Little.
Here. Would you join us with a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unreguiled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item one is agenda received, is proposed or amended?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Other comments? Anybody like speak to the board at this time, it's not an agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to claims and payments, resolution A.
The expenditures this week total 353,519.45. Three five three, five one nine, point four five.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any questions on the... Roll call, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, resolution B.
We have two claims for country view, the total is 9,500.2 cents.
Move to approve?
Second.
Questions?
What were these for?
So, one of them, the, I think it was about 950, was for legal fees for, that's still the ongoing United Healthcare PMI issue. The other one was repair for a sewer line that was prior to closing, and so we're responsible for the repair. There will be one more bill related to that for tiling. They had to dig up the kitchen floor, I believe, to repair the sewer line. That should be the final bill that I am aware of.
Okay. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay, item four is receive project updates from department heads and/or elected officials. Morning Cathy.
Good morning, Board. Cathy Nicholas, county engineer. Last evening, Channel 7 did a news story on the gravel road conditions in, particularly Lynn County was what that newscast was about. I just wanted to give you a brief update of the condition of our gravel roads. As you know, we have approximately 500 miles of gravel roads in Black Hawk County. They are in very similar condition, as I believe many throughout the state are in very similar condition. We do still have a number of frost boils, frost heaves throughout the county. For some reason, the northwest portion of the county seems to have maybe it's more than its share, but, and that could be due to soil conditions, it could be due to high water tables in that portion of the county. The river is, it's a very sandy location part of the county. The river can contribute to those high groundwater levels in many cases. But that is still the vast majority of the problem, is there's still too much water in the subgrade in the roadbed itself. That is very difficult for it to dry up, especially when we keep having rain conditions throughout, you know, several times a week, we still continue to receive rain. That's not helping the situation. And then, of course, traffic driving on the roads, which, there's really nothing we can do about that. We could limit heavy loads to that, and we can talk about that if you want us to consider embargoing some of the county roads. That will be, could be detrimental, obviously, to those individuals who have agricultural needs, planting needs, to get to their fields, to get to their confinement, that, et cetera. So this photo was taken yesterday afternoon on Gresham Road, directly east of Moline Road, so that's about a mile east of Highway 63, and it's one of the largest frost heaves I've ever seen. It's probably 24 to 30 inches tall. So we place these, the barrier up. It is possible to go around the frost heaves. There's many situations like there where the road is passable, provided you don't end up in the middle of the road, you'll get hung up on that frost heave, obviously. And this is just looking the other direction, but you can see there's a lot of water sitting on the road, there's a lot of water in the ditches in that, that portion of the county. There's just a lot of water in the environment up there that needs to leave before the roads can really dry out. It really does us no good to, for our equipment, heavy equipment, to continue to pour rock on it. I've told you in emails, it's just replacing more water and more silt. That causes the heaves. It's really not a financial necessity. We really just need to wait for it to dry out and to minimize the traffic on it. So, those are both very difficult to do, so it is going to take a while. Can I answer any specific questions about this?
Apparently, Leverson's one of those, that's probably the most we've had, more complaints just recently.
Yes, we have had a number of complaints on Leverson. There are, as you know, numerous homes on that road, 40 to 50 homes on that, the road from Dunkerton up to Cedar Wopsie. Even north of there, there's numerous homes. That generates a lot of traffic, just passenger trucks. I'm sure there's some ag traffic, just that constant driving on that road is causing the water to...
Has it been worse this year than in years past?
Yes, it's definitely been worse than, I've been here 10 years, and this is the worst I've seen this spring conditions. Our maintenance folks say it's been the worst in 25 years, and those sentiments are pretty much heard throughout the state from our peers.
So it's not because of a lack of maintenance on the roads, it's because of the weather?
Right. It was due to the very wet fall, and then consequently, the extreme snow, freezing and thawing cycles, the snow events. So this will set us back. Many of the gravel roads, they've lost the crust. You know, we just have black dirt on the top of this road now in that location. So when it dries up, we will be able to place spot rock on that location and start to rebuild the gravel portion of the road. But this will set us back a number of years on many roads.
Because I don't support an embargo on the roads, because I am concerned about agricultural traffic. I think situationally, you're handling it well. Some of these are just the fact of living on a gravel.
Yeah, the embargo part that I suggested in that memo the other day is, you'd certainly exclude farm equipment, obviously, for the farmer right there, but to keep off some of the not-so-normal traffic, because every little bit will help.
Yeah, we could look at a 90-day embargo. Some agricultural traffic is excluded from that. If it has the wider tires, then they would be exempt from an embargo. But anything over, we've done 10-ton embargoes on our seal-coated roads, and then we're keeping an awful lot of traffic.
And I was even thinking less than 90 days. I mean, the number really doesn't make any difference, it's just embargo until our roads get to the point that they can handle the traffic. So whether that's 30, 60...
Generally, when is the end in sight? What date? May 15th? I mean, it's hard to give a specific date, but based on history, what in May we typically find relief?
Based on history, the first part of May, we're, we have been able to go out and start placing spot rock. Sometimes, the last few years, we've been able to do that in April. I think two years ago, we were able to do, place some spot rock in March. So historically, usually by mid-May, we're placing spot rock, we're able to put the Band-Aid rock on these areas. So then, we can apply the dust control, and then we can go about our normal rocking over the summer, where we're rocking one mile at a time to replace the rock as needed.
Cathy, you were planning on a March 14th, or May 14th, I think, work session?
Yes.
And were you going to be addressing then that solutions or things that we should be doing, or could be doing, or need to be doing now after this terrible year, or...
We wanted to talk about, yes, define the problem, but that's pretty, I think you've all had a taste of the problem this year through, from the emails and the letters. But we also wanted to talk about some solutions, and the cost of those solutions, and then just give you more information during that work session.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else?
I just, Cathy, I commend you. I mean, you're trying to stay ahead of it, and this hasn't been easy with all the complaints, but the county's doing the best they can with the hand we were dealt, and the hand we were dealt was the weather.
Thank you, I will pass that on.
I appreciate everything the crews are doing, because this has been an impossible winter. It's the same situation all throughout the state. I guess just to, just to sum up, in the meantime, what is like the number one message to the public, that they can be helpful in this situation, areas that they can avoid, if they don't, if they really don't need to be down on that road?
That's probably good advice. If you don't need to be traveling on the gravel roads, then try to minimize your travel. We do realize people have to come and go, and school buses, obviously, life has to go on. It's just extending the problem with the gravel roads.
Unfortunately, the calls that we're getting from a lot of the people are people that live there. So that's, you know, having trouble getting in and out to go to work and so forth.
Yeah, just be patient with us, I guess is our number one. The message we're trying to tell people now that we, the road just needs to dry out.
Anybody else speak to the board at this time? Okay, moving on to item five, minutes approved for April 23, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six, consent agenda be made with a single resolution.
Second.
Any questions on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. On to item seven, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution of the three-year contract extension between Black Hawk County and the Cedar Ben Humane Society effective July 1st, 2019, and it runs through June 30th, 2022. It gives you the different rates there, it's pretty much the same as it's been for the last few years. Anybody got any questions or comments if you looked the contract over?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item B, discussion, possible board action, memorandum of agreement
with the Salvation Army, allowing the county to use the parking lot over on Seventh Street over here. Who put this on?
Frankie.
Okay.
Cheers. Frank and I worked on it towards the end of last year, and we were having trouble getting back with the major, the major finally got back with us, and I was under the impression he had it, but we had it here in the office, so I put it back on for, to get these cars off the street.
Pete, have you had a chance to see the agreement?
Yeah, yes, I think it's all right.
Rory, we're not going to do any work over there, are we?
Yeah, if you recall, when we had our last work session, I did point out that there were a few areas of concern that I felt needed to possibly have some cold patch put in it just to prevent tripping and hazards, and then also painting some yellow lines, or repainting the yellow lines that are over there.
Dollar amount.
If I recall, I did bring that dollar amount to the board. I wanted to say we're under $1,000 for that. What I planned on doing, and I know Cathy's department's very busy right now, but I was hoping that, like we've done in the past, is work with them with regards to the cold patch, and see if we can't maybe set up a date to work something out, and just go through that parking lot and fill in any...
I think that'd be reasonable, I just don't want to spend too much money on something else's lot.
No, but I do think we definitely need to address that, just to prevent any potential tripping. And then the yellow lines is mostly just labor on our end.
You're not going to have security go over there?
I did not plan on it, no.
Well, time will tell, being used. We'll keep an eye on it and see.
And there was no cost for doing this, I guess, as far from the Salvation Army?
I believe, also, this has been run through insurance?
I believe it was, yes.
Okay.
I think Dana did.
Any other questions?
Rory, were you going to be painting the lines then on both the north and south side? I know we talked about more people using the one...
Yeah, we don't anticipate many using the north side, but I do think regardless, we still need to touch up those lines. They're a little more visible, I believe, on the north side than they are on the south side, but while we're out there, we might as well hit those as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay, do we have a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C is a resolution of the lowest reasonable bid received from Clap Saddle Garber Associates, Cedar Falls. This is for surveying services, the remainder of the calendar year of 2019. So this will be for roughly May, June, two months?
Well, it'll be through the end of the calendar year, so December 21st, 2019.
Okay, yeah, you're right, I see.
We decided to do the contract on the calendar year basis. So this comes about because we no longer have a licensed surveyor, county surveyor, and I've told you that we would, we are still required by the Code of Iowa to do monument preservation for our resurfacing projects. So we did send out proposals, we put together a proposal based on how many corner monuments we felt were, would be needed to be preserved or restored during, during and after resurfacing. And we put that in a proposal, we sent it out to four or five local surveying firms. We got bids back from four surveying firms, and I sent you in an email the list of those four. Clap Saddle, Garber Associates, they were the low bid for this portion of the work, for $7,800. There's actually two components to this contract, it's to do the monument preservation work for $7,800. And then the other component for 15, not to exceed $15,000, is for other surveying services. So the whole contract itself really should be not to exceed the $22,800, is that...
That's right.
Yeah. So the on-call services would be, we occasionally need right-of-way descriptions or plaits, or when people ask for vacations for their property, that type of thing, we occasionally need a licensed surveyor. What I would ask that you recommend the contract.
So this should be modified to say $22,800?
Yes, not to exceed $22,800.
All right. Move to approve?
Second.
Cathy, what would we do then with all our equipment, truck, surveying equipment that we've paid for over the years?
So we still have a survey technician on staff, and he is able to go and do much of our construction survey, things that are not required by the code to be done by a licensed surveyor, which is a lot of elevations, all of, a lot of our work for our design, for roadway projects, our bridge projects, we are still able to do that with our technician. So he's utilizing our truck, and he goes out usually two or three times a week, probably four days a week during the summer, and he's, if you recall, we did just purchase some new survey equipment, so we've gotten really good use out of that already. So anytime you'd like to see that, you're welcome to come down and see what goes on with the surveying side in our office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, this is a resolution, roll call, please.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Item D is a resolution of the lowest reasonable bid received from ATech Freeman Securities, Cedar Rapids, Iowa. This is for the Pine Crest doors. Amount of $23,500. Rory?
Yeah, let me just give you a little explanation of what this project is. It's approximately an additional 10 door fobs. These locations will be on our wing doors over at the Pine Crest, with the idea of securing the departments on each, the west and the east wings. Along with this, we'd also be putting a fob in our elevator, and a fob on our, we call it our tunnel door, if anybody's familiar with the east side of that facility, we have a door that goes directly into our mechanical room, so we want to secure that door as well, and then also a man door that goes down to our basement area. So with this system, we'll be securing our departments, we'll be securing our basement with these 10 additional fobs.
You're talking about the double doors?
Yeah, the wing doors.
What, currently, I've been up there, currently you have people coming off the street that goes down those, how are they going to get through there?
What the, what the normal traffic after this is put into place will be stairwells in the main lobby, so you'll have public be able to go up to, say, let's use the second floor, for example, they'll be able to go to that wing door, and there'll be a buzzer, a doorbell, some sort of a device in place for them to get the...
Aren't the offices way down farther than, I mean, somebody's actually going to get out of their office and open the door?
That's a potential, or we put a buzzer to buzz somebody in. So we were looking at those options. We included in this RFP that ATech provides some sort of a notification system for the, for each floor. And this is, this has been pretty well received with the employees at the Pine Crest facility. Everybody, I believe, is looking forward to this little tighter security. This will really manage, you know, the, the traffic through that building, and it will keep it in the common areas and out of the workers' areas.
I just...
Ideally, I think for me, I believe it's best that the employee go and meet with their client, bring them to their office, that way that person is being escorted to where they need to go. That's all part of the security of that facility.
It's just that some of the floors, I've seen a lot of traffic of employees, and those doors are propped open. And it just makes you wonder if they're going to hit it a key every time they want to go through.
Every employee will be issued a badge.
Yeah, I understand, it's just the question is whether they use it.
They'll have to in order to get into those doors.
Well, I'm talking about propping the door open.
Oh.
Like I've seen, because, you know, it's kind of constant traffic on some of those...
They're, they're all propped open right now. In fact, that's the way they're designed, for the most part. They shouldn't be, but, you know, that's going to be, I think, up to the department head to kind of help manage to make sure that those doors are left shut.
Yeah.
This system, I did want to mention also, will be integrated in with our fire alarm system over there, so we're addressing the life safety code. It'll also be tied in with any type of shelter-in-place program that we have in place, so for an example, if there is a severe weather or tornado, this system will be able to be activated, those doors will automatically open up, and people can shelter in place. So I believe we covered all of our bases with regards to life safety code on that. So it'll be 10 additional fobs in that building.
So for the basement area in that walkway down, down the lower level, that'll only be certain people's fobs, so I'll only work on those.
We'll get with each department, we're going to try to minimize the traffic down in the basement, so we'll get with each department, and they can tell us who they feel should have access to their files down in that basement, and with the new software program that was approved a few weeks back, that gives us the ability to assign access rights to each individual.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, this is a resolution, roll call, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay, item is a resolution, lowest reasonable bid received from Paulson, other Creek of Waterloo. It's in the amount of $22,400 for exterior lighting replacement over at the Pine Crest facility. Rory?
This is for a total of 28 lights, 15 of the, or 13 of those are the pole lights that you see in the parking lot on both the, we call it the upper deck and the lower deck in the north side. It also includes all of the wall packs that are connected to the building. Currently, those fixtures are 400 watt high-pressured sodium lights, they're being replaced with an LED light. We're looking at a significant reduction in wattage, we're looking at approximately 7,400 watts reduction for the pole lights, and approximately 4,000 watt reduction in the wall packs. We're looking at approximately about a $3,000 reduction in our energy usage annually with the addition of these lights. The other thing that's a real plus with these LED lights is versus the existing pole lights that we have at that building, those are $20,000 light bulb, the new lights will be 100,000, the pole lights will be 100,000 hours, the wall packs are almost up to 200,000 hours. So really, what that means for us as a maintenance department is less labor and cost, because right now, when we have to change that light bulb, we have to rent a piece of equipment in order to get up there to do that, and that's a fairly expensive cost to do that, it's called the JLG. So we're looking forward to minimizing that part of it. So not only is it an energy reduction, cost savings there, but it's also a labor savings as well.
Are there any rebates also?
There is, there's a prescriptive rebate, which would come in at about $1,400 by the time we're all set and done.
Motion approved.
Second.
You mentioned this wasn't the lowest bid.
It was not. In fact, the lowest bid did not meet the specifications of the RFP that we sent out. Particularly, there's one item with the wall packs that we called out, it's called a CRI, which means color rendering index. What that means is basically the amount of light that that illuminates, to make what it's illuminating more realistic, more like natural, natural light. So the higher that number, the better light you get, and we called out in our specifications a minimum of 80, the low bid came back at 70, so they did not meet the specifications of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Okay, item A, other business. This is a motion to request for purchase of capital equipment. Kim Veder, IT Director, be approved direct to charity for the same at $17,720 for some server operating software. Kim, anything you want to add to it?
Kim Veder, IT Director, so the $17,720 is for the migration of the data, we're taking it from Fortis, which isn't going to be supported anymore, to DocuWare. We are going to have to do some of the work monitoring ourselves. The treasurer's office has over a million auto registrations that are indexed and documented, so I think it's like almost one and a half million, so that's going to take a little bit longer, and if there's issues, then we'll work with them. And then we need to have a server to install the software on.
Okay. Move to approve?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C is a motion to direct county auditor to advertise for a public bid opening to be held on May 14th, and this is for a proposed purchase of one used 80-ton crane from the Black Hawk County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
You said this was July 1st money?
That's correct, fiscal year '20 money.
Any questions from anybody? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, let's see where we add here. Item D is a motion to direct county auditor to advertise for public hearing be held May 21st, Black Hawk County Courthouse. This is for a proposed janitorial contract to be effective July 1st through June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E is a motion to authorize and direct the finance director to set the date of hearing May 21st on proposed FY '19 budget amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F is a resolution that the appointment of Tony Woods as the 2019 Blackhawk County Weed Commissioner be approved and recommended by Kathy Nicholas.
Second.
Did you have a lot of people sign up for this?
This is just our annual reappointment of Tony Woods. This is in his job description as our lead worker for the roadside, so.
It's code, isn't it?
Yes, it is code that we appoint. You appoint a roadside or a weed commissioner, excuse me.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Felka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Little.
Yes. Item G is a resolution, each owner and each person's possession and control of any land and unincorporated Blackhawk or cut, burner, otherwise destroy all the noxious weeds theron. This is again, as in Code of Iowa 317.
So moved.
We do this yearly also, right?
Right, just to give notice to landowners that they should be out there looking, taking care of the noxious weeds as defined by the Code of Iowa. And if they don't, Tony Woods can write them a letter and we can.
Sure.
Take action after that.
Was there a second?
Second, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felka.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, H is a motion, Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors authorize the county auditor to destroy the following payroll registers.
So. Second.
Grant, this is another thing you do every so often.
Yeah, we have a vault full of old records and it's different time periods for different records, but a lot of stuff we have is very ancient. And sometimes it's a question of preserving historical records and freeing up more space. Space is a valuable commodity and I hate to see anything go, but sometimes you just have to make those tough decisions.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Is there any reports or information from the board at this time?
We saw the state legislature finally wrap up this last week. I just want to point out the irony of one of the bills, which was Senate File 634, which was the so-called transparency bill over our budgeting process. So they seem to think that we're in cahoots with assessments, property tax assessments and, or property value assessments and really trying to do things in the dark when it's, we have, you know, nearly a dozen public work sessions. We publicly, we have a public hearing that's all published and advertised, but they passed a so-called transparency bill at 3:00 AM in the morning. And so not really a fine example of transparency coming from our state legislature. And I'd just like to point out their irony.
Okay, is there anybody else? Except a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.